Okay, members. Good evening. Welcome to our full council meeting. And welcome to any of our residents who are watching us online. Could I ask you first, just to ensure your mobile phones are turned off or turned to silent? So it doesn't interfere at all? Sort that out. Sort yourselves out. Okay. Off with the agenda. Item one, apologies.
We have apologies from councillor Stuart Piper, who has a personal commitment, councillor Rezeki, who has a party commitment, councillor Young, who's unwell, and councillor Huxley, who has a personal commitment.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else, any other apologies, members?
Obviously, who are there?
Obviously not. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in respect to the items on the agenda this evening?
Laura, do I? Yes, I have something to declare.
Councillor Ora, thank you.
Do I just speak out my declaration here? I wish to declare that I have received the three amounts over £100 to Ramsgate Tendory, totaling £1,300 in September 2021 to October 2022, in relation to my mayoral events where the catering was provided by my business. I can assure you, my fellow councillors and the public, that no profit has been made by myself, my family, or our business in relation to these events. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I don't think there's anything else to be said in relation to that. So thank you very much, councillor Ora. Item three, public participation. We haven't got any members of the public. We've also not got any county councillors here. Is there any other member of the committee would like to raise any matters directly related to Ramsgate? A complete hassle. We shall move on. Item four, minutes of the meeting held of the council on the 30th of November as a true record. So can I have someone to propose the minutes? And so have returned a second councillor Nixie. All in agreement of receiving the minutes?
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you. That's approved. Thank you very much. Right, item five, finances, including grants. Item 5.1 is to receive a report of payments between the 16th of October and 31st of December this year. The council is asked to note the payment authorized by the town clerk and the finance officer of a total of £23,120.13 and approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and the finance officer with a total of £158,849.78. Anything to say on that?
Yes, the things where this is a higher figure than normal and it's where it became apparent that the report that you received at the last council meeting didn't include everything that it should have done. So there's certain things in this report that are catching up from earlier in the month. And then also, this is the month in which the National Joint Council pay scales have kicked in with back pay. So this is why the sums are higher than they usually would be.
Members, any comments at all? Any issues? No, could I therefore ask for a proposal for acceptance of this report? Councillor Heatherington, seconded. Councillor Avenden. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried. Item 5.2, to receive a written report from the deputy town clerk/finance officer in respect of the events fund and make a decision in respect of the one grant application contained therein.
So before you is a grant from Power of Women. And as part of their 2023 festival, they want to hold a Ramsgate Day on Saturday, the 11th of March. The total project expenditure is £8,710 and they're asking for £2,000. This money is available within the events budget. The events budget was topped up at a previous meeting with a buy-ment from elsewhere. So funding is available and council is asked to decide whether they would like to grant this money.
Members, discussion? Any comments, councillor Piper?
I don't think we should give them any money at all. I'm not a fan of Power of Women. If they could prove that they could set up a nursery for young bums who live and work in Thanet, so it's like a drop-in service to be really useful for the women of Thanet, I don't approve of their application at all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Piper. Councillor Heatherington?
I thought councillor Green would be able to...
Oh, sorry, pick your part.
I'd rather listen to the people.
Councillor Heatherington?
Actually, I'm contradicting. I very much think, and I'm pleased, that this has all been very Margate-centric, in my opinion. And the fact that we're actually having a day in Ramsgate, I would definitely want to support that because that's been a complaint from this council in the past about them not focusing on Ramsgate. And this is one day, they're wanting 2,000. I mean, they're raising the rest of this money and it seems quite an extensive programme to me. So I would like to give them some money.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ora?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Heatherington and I'm fully supportive towards this event. And like Jane said, that they used to be doing stuff in Margate before, but now they're doing something in Ramsgate, so we must support them.
Councillor Green, did you want to come in now? Or councillor Crittendon's got something to say, it's up to you.
Well, I just wanted to say that I look forward to the day when we don't need to have special women's events. But we haven't reached that point. And I would like to propose we give them the full amount, purely because they seem to have listened to us and looking on board that if we're going to give a grant, it needs to be in Ramsgate.
Yeah. Is there a seconded?
I'd say no.
I...
Hang on, councillor Crittendon?
Don't worry. Yeah, I think it's been...
Councillor Wing?
I think Margate were ahead of us in many respects. You've just got to look at Pride, there's nothing really here. And yet, I also would welcome the day when what you are or who you are is totally irrelevant. But we live in a society where that simply, we're not even anywhere near. I mean, the work we do with the Ukrainians is quite remarkable, actually, because most of it sits in, most of the work with immigrants sits in Margate. So I welcome the fact that Margate are reaching out to us and I also think that we need to reach out to them as well. So I fully support giving them the whole lot because they do a great deal of work with a great number of women, many of whom are vulnerable.
Thank you. Anybody else, any comments? Councillor Moore?
If they're spending one day in Ramsgate, I mean, I'm for it, but I think the price is a little high for one day.
We've got more stuff, isn't there?
There's so many.
Okay, well, unless anyone has got anything else to say, we do have a motion on the table to give the full amount that they're asking for for £2,000 and it's been seconded. So I'll ask you to vote. So all in favour of that, please show. Those against? That is carried. Thank you. Right, that's good. Moving on to item six.
I get that sometimes.
Is the business plan. That's to receive a draft business plan for 2023 to 2027 and consider if any changes should be made prior to adoption. Members are also asked to consider if the current draft budget adequately supports this plan or if there are areas for amendments. And note that the attached budget is as previously considered, with no further amendments yet, for example, increased events budgets. So members, I'll put this over to you in relation to the draft budget plan.
Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So this document is supposed to underwrite and inform a variety of things. It will be the budget, the communication strategy, performance indicators for the staff. It should be the, everything else is based upon. It's not a huge reinvention of the wheels from the one that I did last year. There's more of an introduction. I would suggest an additional strategic objective to improve the environment of the town, which, because I think there's a variety of things that are now falling under that heading.
That's a good idea.
Before you is councillor Green's some amendments. And I would suggest that these all reflect things where there's an omission in my report to be improved upon. There's not new things being added in. Looking at this and the draft budget, there's two areas where I think the budget is not supporting this document. One thing we haven't got at the moment is a training budget for councillors. With regard to training next year, I have been in contact with TDC to ask whether they can come to us to give training or possibly there could be training for the non-dual hatters across Thanet. And I've also asked whether our non-dual hatters can just join in with the training that TDC has given. So I mean, hopefully they will be receptive to that. But I think we possibly will also need, hopefully they wouldn't charge us, but that there would also be some maybe external training as well. So I think there could be a budget there. And also, we don't have a budget for or a proposal relating to the climate change work, which I think needs to come via a climate change working group. So I think that's two areas that for myself, I feel the budget isn't tying in with the business plan. So they're two areas there to be considered.
Okay, if I can just say that town clerk and I have discussed the training budget. I think it's something that, because we've got a new council coming in in May, it's something that should be available to all members. And I would ask all members, if you're re-elected, to take up the courses. And that's what we're working hard to try and get TDC. They will do them anyway. So it just makes sense for us, Balsdares Town Council and any other of the parish councils to come in and get that training because I think it's really necessary.
Can I just add a point of information there? On the member training group at Thanet District Council, there is a plan for considerably enhanced amount of training and we have, several of us have pushed that as much as is relevant to this training should be made available to all town and parish councils because it's happening anyway. It's no extra cost to Thanet District Council to invite people in. And we've made the point that, for example, things like planning, it would be really helpful for people who are not twin haters to have access to that training so they understand what they're doing when they're looking at a planning application, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully that's pushing at an open door.
And I think the fact of the matter is that it's an in-house training. There's no external coming in.
There is a plan that some external trainers may come in, but that's going to happen anyway and therefore involving town and parish councillors will make no difference to the overall cost.
Okay, so members, any comments on councillor Crittendon?
Yeah, my apologies, I don't have any copies in front of me and I didn't bring my laptop. But I do, councillor Oshin is prepared to let me read it. I have read the papers before. I guarantee I read the papers before I came. I didn't have any particular queries or anything else, but just picking up on what has been said. I was wondering about what liaison the town clerk is or has or could do with the other parish councils with regard to then liaising with Thanet District Council to be a part of Thanet District Council's training schemes. I do recall that when we were elected nearly four years ago, that we came away from our first meeting with a thick folder of the policies and procedures printed out, which was rather deep at the time. I think actually having them online now is probably better than what we knew that was. So that was the nearest we got in training. And I'd just like to comment on councillor Green's thing here. Number 2.5, could we just add something to the end of that sentence? As far as is reasonably applicable, possible, whatever. A suitable ending to that, but it's...
Could I? What was it you would want to add?
As far as is possible.
Okay, I think what's missing of that is that TDC, as we know, as members who are there, now have a youth council which includes representatives from schools across Thanet, including Ramsgate.
In that case, in liaison with Thanet District Council, instead of what I just said.
Yeah.
I just think that we need to put that in there.
Yeah.
But that was it, thank you.
On my feedback on TDC training, and I put it on my feedback form every year, and I think there's a huge hole, a massive hole, and I think there's a massive hole here, is safeguarding training and equality and diversity training. And actually, all of us should be DBS-checked because we often work with vulnerable adults, we may be going into homes, including our staff. So I hope that any training would include at least the safeguarding training and the equality and diversity training, which should be a two-year rolling programme, really.
Yeah, I can't see why that shouldn't be part of it. But it may be that TDC won't do that, in which case that we would have to look for our own. But I think you're quite right. I think that's very important.
Once again, it's something that we've pushed.
Would you have your...? Councillor Austin?
Again, it's something that we've pushed through the member training group, but Nicholas Hughes advises that we are not required to be DBS-checked and indeed, it would not be practicable for every councillor and every council across the country to be DBS-checked. The cost would be astronomical, et cetera, et cetera. So even though we are interacting with vulnerable adults.
It would just take one dodgy councillor and then it'll all change.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up?
Well, it was just to speak to the notes that I sent Laura. They were intended for Laura to read, so if she thought that they added to the document. But there are two things there that I thought were particularly important. I'd like to see our net zero promise be a strategic objective.
Yes.
And the other one was the two items on involving young people. I think this council hasn't done that in the past.
Yes.
All right.
And I think it should.
Bring the town clerk in before you, councillor Crittendon.
May I suggest that the strategic objective I've added to improve the environment of the town and strategic objective net zero promise, actually, I think we combine the two because I think the actions under one are near enough the same as the actions under the other, so they could be combined into one.
Okay, I've got councillor Crittendon, councillor Austin and councillor Nixie.
I just wanted to follow up on councillor Wing's point about the DBS check. I'm very aware that, and I know a lot of us are double hatters here, and as TDC councillors, we do go in and meet with vulnerable people. But as town councillors, that's not part of our role. And so I don't think as a town... But the work we do with vulnerable people comes under the hat of doing the district council, not the town council.
I don't think, I mean, for me, it's...
That's good, sorry, there's others before you, pick your part. I've got councillor Austin, then councillor Nixie, then councillor Heatherington.
I just wanted to comment a couple of... And I like the highlighted item about improved process for community engagement because I think that's really important and obviously that will feed into things like the neighbourhood plan. The one that, there are a couple where I wanted just to suggest a couple of additions. The one about the 20 mile an hour, I wondered if we could add something more general about and improve road safety, work to improve road safety in the town or pedestrian safety or something of the kind because it's not just about 20 miles an hour, it's about trying to get more crossings and all of that. And then the other one was where we've got something about working with Pfizer and whatever. I was wondering whether we could add other organisations there. Notably, the town team, which hasn't done very much since lockdown, but actually used to do a great deal of that sort of work before we had the technician force we have now and still can marshal a group of volunteers where those kinds of things are required. And the other thing I was going to do was my usual English teacher thing, which is we should either start the sentences with to do, to provide, to enforce, to arrange, or we should take the twos out, but we shouldn't have a mixture.
Nine out of 10.
Detention for your...
Excellent piece of work, however. A star.
That's excellent.
Thank you. So first of all, yeah, well done Laura and anybody else that's been involved in this. That's great. And I agree with what councillor Green said and the other amendments. And to make it a little bit more comprehensive, I think that's really good. The only thing I wanted to say was we said that we would do this for technicians and staff, but we also mentioned that we'd do it for councillors. I really do think there's merit in doing an audit of the skills that people have. And so who has got DBS checks and the rest of it? It's surprising, in business terms, and I've done this, and you actually look to see what people do beyond their immediate means. It's quite interesting to see what other people bring to the party that you just didn't even know about. And it's about using people's skills. So we did say that we were going to do that. I just think it might be a good common sense exercise just to see what training people have had, what DBS checks they've got, or whatever it is we want to put in that audit. That could be public knowledge, just me. So to remind ourselves of that.
Okay. Councillor Heatherington?
Just on that, my understanding of DBS checks is that they're for a specific purpose, for a specific job. Because your DBS checks for one thing doesn't affect another.
Sorry, it's changed since then, just so you know. That once you've got a DBS, you can actually use it for other things. It was, you can get it for one job, you can pay a certain amount of money to have it covering all sorts as a supply teacher. I can do that. Rather than with my company that I work for as a supply teacher, I can actually use it for other things. They explain that.
I had expended, I didn't know that.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, can I, sorry, can I, instead of going across, please, can I just go? I've got councillor Heatherington, please.
No, you're right, actually, don't, because I used to have two separate DBS checks within two separate roles. What I was going to say, just adding to what councillor Nixie said, I totally agree with what you're doing here because there are some of us actually who could provide some of his training internally.
Yes.
That have got the skills to provide it. And many of us do have DBS checks. And I know officially we're not meant to, but certainly there was a time when I accompanied you on a home visit, Rashawn, where it needed considerable amount of DBS skills to do. And it was very new as well.
Okay, sorry, can I just, I've got councillor Wing and councillor Crittendon?
I think it's best practice and they have changed. So many years ago, I had six DBS checks in one year because each organisation forced me to have one. And there is a new system whereby if you do something online within so many weeks that there's an automatic update, it short circuits. But for me, we are out and about in town and particularly, our workers are out and about in town and people come up and talk to us. So for me, I have a DBS by the Royal Harbour and that makes me feel safer in a sense. Safer, you know, I've been checked, so I'm okay.
Now.
Also, I agree with councillor Nixie on this period. If you do, if we do audits of councillors and workers and in that audit, you're asking people for areas of development, not weaknesses, then sometimes you can match people with somebody else's strength and there can be some peer'd coaching, which really is an effective way of staff development, of staff and councillor development. It was effective in the school I worked in. So that, an audit would be a good thing.
Thank you. Councillor Crittendon? No? Councillor Austin, did you want to?
Oh, no.
No? Whilst I'm hearing you all talking about the DBS checks and whatever, I think as part of this, if I could, would it make sense if we just asked the town clerk to check into it? To get us the full details of it? And then so that we can include that in? That makes sense? I would think. Well, I would think it was aesthetic. So we have a number of amendments to this and additions to this report. The town clerk's got, are you happy with what's written down, just a bit rundown? And don't expect any changes to this?
So to approve this document, subject to the following amendments. In relation to 20 mile per hour zone, add in and improve road safety. Referenced Pfizer's, include others, include, e.g. the town team. Strategic objective net zero promise and to improve the environment of the town to be incorporated into one. And then the amendments, the one, two, three. Six amendment on actual steps as proposed by councillor Green to be added in. And at 2.5, in liaison with TDC to be added.
And could we just also have DBS checking it? Subject to you checking it and so we've got the proper content? If members are happy with that. So can I have a proposal for this, please? Councillor Austin and seconded councillor Nixie. And can I have a show of hands of all in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously, thank you. Thank you, members, on that. Right, item seven, which is Radford House. And that's to receive a written report from the town clerk and deputy town clerk and consider the various recommendations contained therein. So town clerk will just give you a quick introduction to it and then I will pass you over to the chair of Radford House, councillor Nixie, for further information.
Okay, so there's seven items to be considered in here. The first is you're asked to note a very thorough building survey that we've received from Michael Foley. And there's two things identified in there. It's condition works to be undertaken when the larger refurbishment project is undertaken and things that he's recommending are done as soon as possible. And those are particularly relating to keeping the building dry, not letting rain damage in, gutters, roof repairs. And so we will be going out to get quotes for those in the new year. To approve a quote for a new second-hand boiler. The boiler that we would be having is six months old. Obviously, in a care home. That was due to be disposed of, so went in temporarily to do six months' work and is now ready for its next home. Thetic boiler. To approve the quote for installation of an accessible toilet. So this is downstairs where there's cubicles and a shower. To replace that with one accessible toilet space. To approve the funding required for a community engagement and events coordinator. And the chair, councillor Nixie and myself have now interviewed for this post. There were seven very strong... Sorry, jolt me.
All right, I'll just wait.
Mayor, councillor Nixie, and chair. Chair.
Oh, you're the chair?
I have a chair. Not ego, ego.
How awake now?
There were seven very strong applications received. Very strong applications received and all seven candidates were invited to give a fifteen minute presentation. Uh, three declined to interview. Uh, the interview panel consisted of the Chair, comma, councillor, Nixie and myself, who received the.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, who received these presentations yesterday morning. Uh, scoring sheets were used to score each candidate, candidate against the skills that were set out in the original brief. Uh, the presentations were all excellent and all the candidates were of a very high standard. Um, and it is hoped that we will, um, still work with the unsuccessful candidates in the future because of actually other groups that they work with, who will still use Radford House. There is a top scoring candidate and it is recommended that they appoint, that they are appointed using a standard contractors agreement, uh, to start as soon as possible in the new year. Um, the required, um, budget is twenty thousand pounds for this work at twenty five pound per hour. This is for a contractor, not a staff member. All of the applicants, it was around twenty to twenty five pounds an hour. All right. To confirm the contractor to undertake the NICE EIC electrical condition survey, we've got two quotes. Um, the one that's recommended by, um, the supervisor technician is the electrician who has previously, um, inspected the, the building for KCC. To approve a quote for a feasibility study of the technicians depot, and this is by the architect that the council has appointed for Radford House. Um, so it's not guaranteed that the technicians will stay in Radford House and how, how much or little is kept there. Um, but I think it makes sense for the architect who's, who's doing Radford House to also be considering what's happening in the car park. Um, so he would be looking at a, a variety of options about the technicians, the technicians staying in their entirety. Is there certain plant and machinery and equipment that's not used regularly that could go somewhere else? If there was a depot still in the car park, what, what would that, what could that look like? Would we be looking at something that's a long term solution or something that's only for a few years whilst, whilst we look for something else more suitable? Um, this person would, would, would tile those options and, and work with the technicians to understand exactly what they need and what they need to have near to hand, what they only access a couple of times a year and could be further away. And then finally, to consider and approve an additional budget, um, for councillor Nixie, councillor Green and myself for surveys, repairs and incidentals that are coming up. And this is where, um, uh, we've previously been delegated the power to, um, sign off invoices received from the project managers and work in relation to the architectural, um, heritage fund project development grant. Um, but that is, the, the, the purpose of those funds is, is now being allocated and, um, as, as stages progress, that, that there's going to be more coming in.
Thank you. Councillor Nixie, you're in.
So, um, thank you. So basically, just to sort of, I think, lengthen this a bit more. We, we talked last round about the fact that second hand boiler and the installation of the accessible toilets are going to be put in now and paid for now, but again, used at another time. So although they're in there for meanwhile use, they've been linked to for health and safety and so on and so forth, this isn't buying twice. This is the case of like, we're buying this now so that we can set that meanwhile use going, um, and they will be used again. Um, and with regards to, just jumping down to the last one for a bit. So as Laura says, there's, there's this next tranche of money that's, that's coming on because the monies that we've had before have been used up, is just to be able to have that money there. Because what's happened tonight, for example, is second hand boiler and the accessible toilet, we wanted to clear through council, obviously, but it did mean that we couldn't do any works until that was cleared. So those works could have actually happened in the last two weeks.
They're hearing it from me.
We wanted to make sure it came to council first. So it's having money there in place to make sure that we can bring things to council and move it as and when. It will always go through council. Councillor Green, go on.
No, you carry on.
Okay, right. So, and the only other one thing I wanted to say, so it's been, it has every month's interest in Radford House, amazing. We had a very good meeting here with the project managers and really went through the design brief again for what we wanted to make sure that the architect knew. And it was, um, uh, an excellent meeting with councillor Green, uh, town clerk and myself and, and AV Construction. Um, and that really helped us narrow down the works that the building survey, let me just explain the building survey, it was a ninety three page document, ninety, anybody to read it, it was outstanding. Michael Foley, I'll take my hat off to you. So, um, if anybody does want to read it, honestly, it's a good read, but he didn't leave any brick unturned at all. So it was very good for us to be able to highlight exactly what needs to be done now. It's like perfect. Um, so it was an excellent meeting. And yesterday, again, we, as Laura said, we had four very, very good candidates, one of which, um, we have selected. So meanwhile use starts, um, from January, but obviously a lot of that is, uh, data collecting and marketing and basically, um, you know, scoping the, the project and so on and so forth. And it'll run until the end of September. So where are we going with this is come the new year, then toilets going in, the boilers going in, unfortunately, um, uh, meanwhile use person is going to be there starting work. Regardless, we'll have more meetings with that person so that we can explain exactly what we're doing and they'll liaise with us the whole time, keep you informed and basically start on stage two of the rebar process in earnest. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, if I can, before I bring you in, David, just, just to say, um, that uh, at the end of this, the town clerk will announce the person is that we've selected. Um, but I will be turning off the sound so the public don't hear the name until, because obviously we haven't told the person. So you, you will be, you will be, uh, before the person does. Okay. Thank you, town clerk. And I'll bring you in, David.
Uh, I just wanted to ask, how is it envisaged that the, that the, the contractor that we're just, just about to employ, how are they, how envisaged they will be managed?
By myself. I would be the, so, uh, yes, by myself. And then they will need to take, um, or get information from, um, the project managers, but primarily reporting to me.
It's in, in, mainly Laura, because technically she's the one in charge of the, um, office side of things, but in, with support of me. So, you know, double hatter for want of a better word. But Laura technically is the.
Councillor Weing.
So you will report back to the council on progress?
Yes.
Rather than the contractor themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you wanted the contractor.
No, no, no.
And I would, I would, I would be doing it, but actually not on this part.
Okay.
I'd just like to say thank you for all involved. I know Michael quite well, but, but and also I know there's still people out in the community think, you know, a lot of people don't think about the, the fire station anymore because they haven't seen any progress. So I think it's really important that we find some way of reporting on this progress.
I think.
That's what's starting, that's basically one of the jobs for the meanwhile use person.
Something we could release before Christmas that, that somebody in place, we look at meanwhile use, the boiler's going in, there's a document you want to read, it's online, you can access the document. Because, I mean, there's clearly been a lot of hard work. And we all know that it's ninety percent preparation and that, you know, actually changing the building is.
I think what's important, I, I think what was important for, for the three of us doing the interviews was that each, each of the candidates who's, who the town clerk has said were excellent, absolutely excellent, um, that they, one of the things, the things that they said was, we need to advertise.
Yes.
Um, a lot of people don't know where Radford House is because it doesn't say Radford House, it still says the old fire station. So there's things like that that need to be done. So I'll, I'll bring the town clerk in, please.
So actually, it's a, a new point, but in relation to the, um, uh, an additional budget, um, delegated to myself in conjunction with councillors Nixie and Green, um, the boiler could have been installed this week, but we didn't have the permission to sign it off. Um, so it's now take, could be, uh, taking place, it could take on the twenty third of January. So not, not too long to wait, but it, it is the type of thing that if you can have some, some permissions in place to be ticking things off.
Okay, so, um, can I just therefore ask members if they're willing to, if they, to accept the report? Um, do you need a, a proposal to accept the report, please? Councillor Green, seconded, councillor Heatherington?
Um, I think we should put a, a figure on the additional budget that's going to be delegated.
Have you on that?
We're talking about fifty thousand, aren't we? Only because it's the next sort of like tranche of money for the, for the works to be done, fifty thousand would seem suitable.
Suitable. So, members, are you in favour of that?
Yep.
At fifty grand? Okay, so, um, that's part of that then. Uh, so all in favour of the report, exceptions? Thank you very much. If I could just advise, uh, our residents or, or anybody else who's, who's watching, uh, the live stream, I was just going to turn the sound off, uh, because we're going to announce who we've just, uh, who the contractor is that we're going to employ. And then it will become public after, uh, after the, the applicant has been told.
What if we've got lip read as well?
Till the end of the meeting?
We could turn around that way and then we could talk that way.
I, I mean, imagine somebody says, oh, that's good, I'm really glad they've got the job. They'll do, Mary will do a great job partway through the meeting when some of us might drop.
Yes. Why don't we do it at the very end and turn everything off?
At the end, we'll, we'll, we'll. Taking advice. Okay. Sorry, uh, members of the public who are watching, it's changed everyone. It'll be done at the end once the meeting is finished. Thank you very, very much. Right. Uh, moving on. Um, item eight is the collections policy. And this is to consider and adopt that policy, uh, which you should have, you should have all seen. Um, and I will just, did, did you want to go? Yeah, posh, I was the town clerk. We will engage you.
Um, so the council previously resolved to, um, adopt a collections policy. The one before you is the, um, the Arts Council template, um, that's recommended, um, for accredited museums and galleries. And it might seem rather overspect for our requirements, but this is a very tried and tested, um, document. And without trying to reinvent the wheel for something to a le, with a lesser, um, weight, um, I'd recommend that actually we go with, yeah, the Arts Council paperwork. And then this will also tie in with their template documents for loans, acquisitions. It, it, it opens us up to using all of their, their template documents. Um, and if in the future the council is in a position to develop its archives or be thinking about a museum, we're, we're, we're familiar with the types of paperwork that, um, is required.
Members, any comments? Councillor Green and then councillor Heatherington.
I'm quite happy with what's proposed, but could I suggest that we also produce a, one side of A four version to, to tell the, the public?
I, I don't think that has to be part of the collection policy, but I think, as you say, makes, makes a bit of sense. So that we can keep. Councillor Heatherington?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the town clerk for the, the reports and that really, basically we now have the correct procedures in place to manage a collection of art archives and that, something which we didn't have.
Thank you. Councillor Weing?
I can't, I can't believe what we have hidden away. I mean, some, there, you can't, some of the bits are so fine, you'd see them in the museum in London. But Tricia has noted this one. I'm so glad we're not going to hold or intend to acquire any.
Any human remains.
At, at point nine.
Never say never.
Okay. Uh, members, can I have a proposal to accept? Councillor Nixie and councillor Heatherington, seconded. All those in favour? Septuennit? Thank you very much. That's carried. Thank you. Moving on.
I'd just point out, there's something odd about the numbering in, on pages five and six. So is that it again? Please look it up.
It's got point nine and then it's got ten point one.
The numbers, yeah, the numbers don't match. It gets the human remains item that.
Right, members, please, please.
He's important, the number one.
Yeah, please, members, the, the councillors, please. Thank you. Um, item ten, no, sorry, uh, item nine, a national grid ceiling. And this is to consider the council's response to the non-statutory consultation. And I think that's important, it's a non-statutory consultation from the National Grid on ceiling. It's an update on proposals to provide a subsea connection between Suffolk and Kent, uh, start of the non-statutory public consultation. The presentation slides from Thanet District Council are included, as well as a recommendation from the Climate Change Action Group. Do you want to make any comment at all?
Uh, no, but I could, uh, read the recommendation.
Yes, please, if you want, yeah.
Um, so the, uh, Climate Change Action Group has said that, uh, uh, we recommend that RTC responds to this council's state, consultation stage positively whilst requesting in strong terms that all the survey information available from the SSSIs is shared with the council and redacted at the earliest opportunity. Um, the, the deadline for a response was the eighteenth, but the council has been given an extension until tomorrow.
Councillor Nixie?
I think, um, and again, it says here in, in the information, but basically, you know, you've got to be a stakeholder to be able to be, um, considered by the inspector when there is a stake place in due course. And that is really important.
We know this crucial thing in here, actually. And so if we could respond, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Green?
I mean, this is a hugely important scheme, which I think we've got all support.
Please.
Um, but our, our particular interest, of course, is, is within regards to pegwell and, and the. So I, I agree, we should, we should make a simple, um, stake, if you like, uh, so that in future, if we need to come in, we can.
We've got the opportunity.
I think that, I, I, obviously, as, I mean, I attended the TDC event and I think most of us who double hats here did. Um, and it was hugely important, as, as councillor Green has said, as to what is taking place. Um, and, uh, but the, the, one of the things that was discussed, David, was, was because of the pegwell SSI, uh, SSI. Um, and most the people, us from Ramsgate were, were concerned from, for the effect on the wildlife, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, you can't, you can't make something, was it, without breaking eggs. So something's got to be done. Get an omelette. Let's, let's, let's call it an omelette. Um, so I, I totally and utterly agree, uh, that our Climate Change Action Group have made comment and I think that's a good comment and I think that we should support it. Uh, and as I say, we've, uh, reservations to be able to come back anyway.
It's, it's really, because we were on the planning committee, that the battery storage place is in the same location, well, similar location. So I'm, I'm really unclear as to how, how the two link, or do they link at all? Because I think we've got to be careful of in that area. There's, there, there could be a lot of stuff going on in a short space of time.
It's to, it's to do with it coming off, coming through into land and then coming back out again.
Does it lead to the battery?
And then go, I, I.
I don't think it does.
I don't think it is. It's linked to the batteries. It's not off the.
That we could end up with two massive developments in and around a very sensitive site.
Yeah.
Uh, the battery storage has only got a thirty year life, which.
The end of the day, the, the end of the day, you know, we can make comment, but it's out of our hands and it's a non-statutory comment. And I think that that's, that's the important thing. However, members, are you in favour?
Yep.
Those agree? Can I have a, sorry, I should have said, can I propose a, please? Councillor Heatherington, seconded. Councillor Weing, all in favour? Thank you. That is carried and we look forward to sending that sort of, to them. Um, right, National Grid, National Grid ceiling. Right, item ten, Ramsgate Society, uh, project. And this is to receive and consider a proposal from the Ramsgate Society for the council to jointly host the Ramsgate Design Awards in two thousand twenty three. If I could just say to you that, um, uh, the mayors do. If I could just say to you that, um, uh, at the mayor's do, down at the, um, Salvation Army, I had the pleasure of talking to, uh, the Chair of Ramsgate Society and which he, which he approached, approached me to see whether he thought the council would support it. And I could see no, absolutely no reason not to. Uh, that I think it's something we should enjoy getting involved in, in relation to the development in our, in our area. So personally, um, I'm going to propose from the Chair that, that we should support this.
I second that.
Second, councillor Austin. Anyone want to make any comment or talk in relation to it? I don't think
I just wanted to say that it links very nicely to our new, uh, business plan objective around improving the environment, doesn't it?
I just, I don't think there was any full stops out of place there.
No, I think the full stops are all in exactly the right place. Perfect.
Okay, um, all in favour, please show? Thank you, that's carried.
I was just going to
Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Everington.
Very nicely and with as well the presentation at New York Club by the Ramsgate Society, the De Laurentiis, which would be good if we could hear it because they had some wonderful ideas
Yes, exactly.
Maybe the Arts Barge will get an award eventually. It's on the slipway.
If they're levelling up the funds because they're joining with the awards.
I think it's, I think the Arts Barge is going out to sea and it's going to be, it's going to be a, a reef.
It's had it
It's going to be a reef.
It's been scraped, hasn't it?
Is it really? How lovely. Forward, I think I've been hearing it actually when I was here yesterday. Okay, thank you, members, for that. Um, right, uh, item eleven is a council representative. And, uh, thi- this item is to nominate a representative for the Thanet Coastal Stakeholder Group that will bring together the representatives from T D C and organisations and individuals from across Thanet with partner agencies, including Southern Water and the Environment Agency. Purpose of the group is to provide a forum to share information on initiatives and activities focused on the Thanet coast, to support the tourism industry, enhance and protect our environment and strengthen the local partnerships. Meetings will be held quarterly via Microsoft Teams. The first meeting is in January. A maximum of one representative from each group is invited to attend due to space and to maintain a balance. So, members, especially what we're asking, uh, what we're asking you is if any member wishes to be that councillor who would be part of the Thanet Coastal Stakeholder Group?
Oh, yes.
Councillor Everton? That was when I was first, I went, oh, I'll give it, oh, that'd be Tony, everybody here want to do that. So i- if, um, as councillor Everton has put his name forward, if anybody else who would want to put their name forward? No, so can we have a vote on that? I propose we accept councillor Everton and seconded by councillor Everington. All in favour, please show? You are the man. Um, the town clerk will evaluate the, the necessary, um, dates when that comes in and give you the link and everything of that, of that nature. So, members, can I, can I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and let's hope for a fantastic new year? And, um, and also for anybody who's watching, uh, wish you a merry new, a, a merry new year. And, and a happy Christmas. Um, not particularly in that order. Um, so, uh, thank you all for, for coming this evening. And the date of the next meeting is on Thursday, the nineteenth of January, uh, at which that will be a budget setting council.